Today is April 5th, 2017. And today we are here for the public comment portion of the automatic budget process. But before we begin, will everyone please rise and so we can salute our flag? Madam Secretary, will you please take the role? Actually, this is the Honorable City Clerk. Will you please take the role? Alderman Anderson would like to be excused.
Alderman Beatty.
Here.
Alderman Bevan.
Here.
Alderman Beer.
Madam Secretary, Alderman Beer is excused.
Alderman Casey.
Here.
Alderman Gurman.
Alderman Gurman is also excused.
Alderman Genitasio.
Here.
Alderman Golden.
I'm sorry, Madam Secretary, Alderman Golden also would like to be excused. She might be coming in a little late.
Alderman Grant.
Here.
Alderman Hardeman.
Here.
Alderman Shaw.
Here.
Alderman Smith.
Here.
Alderman Vicarelli.
Here.
Alderman Vitro.
Here.
Alderman Vitale.
Here.
We have 11 present.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. We do have a forum. This is the budget meeting devoted to public comment. We will start with the education side of the budget first and then move on to the city side of the budget. Please remember that the time limit limited to each speaker shall be three minutes. Residents, taxpayers, and electors may address the board at this time. The Board encourages speakers not to express derogatory, insensitive, or offensive statements, or to engage in personal attacks against individuals. In order to allow everyone an opportunity to speak, I'd ask that everyone please limit their comments to three minutes. Any speaker wishing to comment on the education side of the budget will please come to the Please state your name and address clearly so we can have it for the record.
Good evening. My name is Laura Fucy. I live at 418 Anderson Avenue. You all face a difficult budget season and I wish you all the best of luck in working together and making the best decisions for the people of Milford. Proposed cuts to the federal education budget will significantly hurt every state. The Connecticut General Assembly is working on making state education funding more equitable than what the governor has proposed. Unfortunately, we won't know those outcomes before you have to vote on Milford's budgets. Since the majority of funding for Milford Public Schools comes from our local taxes, the decision as the amount ultimately falls to this board. Reducing the local education budget at this time on top of the potential cuts from the federal and state governments will negatively impact academic, athletic, and arts programs, class sizes, and jobs. As a community, we cheer our student athletes, we honor our students' scholars, we applaud our fine arts students, and celebrate all of our students' accomplishments. I believe that the pride we feel for the successes of our students achieve -- what are -- what the -- I'm sorry. I believe that the pride we feel for the successes our students achieve is connected to our investment in our public schools. Public education has been referred to as the great equalizer. In addition to providing an equal opportunity to education and advancement, public education is an investment in the future of our society and democracy. We need to keep Milford Public Schools on its path of improving its educational goals and educating its future citizens. Just as an aside, more anecdotally, I marched in the parade, most recently the St. Patrick's Day Parade, with the Milford Foreign High Band. The crowds were excited even before we came upon them. They were shouting. They were really proud. At Milford, at Parsons Complex, I work in the registrar voter's office, we have a community cafe called Parsons Perks. They're run by transitioned students. They are students who have special needs and other challenges. They interact with the community at Parsons in an incredible way. From the time they started, they have grown so much. They're learning skills. They're learning how to service people. They're learning -- they're preparing for jobs once they leave Milford Public Schools. We have tremendous amount to offer, the Milford Public Schools does. It's incredible and they're such an integral part of the community and we really need to support that and support all the endeavors that they're really trying to teach these kids. Please do not reduce the Board of Education proposed budget. Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Michael Brown, 67 Point Beach Drive, Milford. Just want to make sure that we approve the proposed budget from the Board of Finance and ignore the -- any sort of potential changes or suggested changes that might come from the state at this point. I think we should fully fund Milford's education. Thank you.
My name is Marguerite Hennessy. I live at 35 Elaine Road in Point Beach. And even though I don't have kids in the Milford Public School system myself, I request that you do not cut the budget because I just feel that it's a public good. Stronger schools lead to a more stable community. And as a homeowner, I have a vested interest in keeping our property values high. A strong public school will help our property values. Ninety-one percent of prospective homebuyers do consider school districts when looking where to buy a house. And 20% of homebuyers will actually pay above their budget if it means getting into a better school district. Thank you and good night.
Hi, my name is Tessa Markey. I live at 67 Point Beach Drive and I run a small business here in Milford. We've been in business for almost 25 years. And in those 25 years, we've had over 150 employees and interns, most of whom come from the public schools in Milford. And it's always been very important to us to make sure that we assist in the mentoring of the students. But it does require that they have a number of skills which will allow them to work in an office, that they have a commitment to the city and to working. And that starts in the schools and in the clubs that they belong to. I also used to serve on the scholarship committee at the Chamber of Commerce and is very committed to the kids in town as they grow into adults because they will be paying our taxes when we get too old. And that happens. So please don't -- if you can do anything to preserve and control a good budget with all of the special extras that really are integral to a good education, and that includes the arts and the sciences as well as sports. Thank you.
My name is Erin Pinsens. I am at 11 Briggs Court. I'm actually here to read a letter on behalf of another person, but I'd also like to share my story. So I'm hoping that you'll allow me six minutes instead of three. On behalf of Sarah Bromley. She writes, "I regret that I am unable to attend the meeting tonight, but I would like to take this opportunity to express my support for Milford Public Schools and for the superintendent's proposed budget. I understand that Milford faces potential losses of state aid and that you have a very challenging budget before you. As our civic leaders, you have an obligation to your constituents and I believe your future constituents. The children of Milford cannot yet vote." Excuse me. I lost my place. But in tonight, you have the power to implement a budget that will send the message that you care about their future and the future of Milford. My family moved to Milford 12 years ago and strong public schools were the reason we chose to settle here. Supporting public schools in all ways, but especially financially, just makes sense. Even taxpayers who have no children should get the fact that strong schools will attract more families and more money to Milford and be great for property values. This budget is not a frivolous one, it is a thrifty one. Cutting even a penny from it would be foolish and short-sighted. In the past 12 years, my family has not had the resources to send our children to private schools and we have no interest in magnet or charter schools. Even if we did have the resources to choose a private school, we would not because we believe so strongly in supporting the hard-working, dedicated teachers and administrators of Milford Public Schools. Our two children have benefited from the excellent Milford Public Schools, JFK, Pumpkin Delight, West Shore, and Foreign. And I'm appalled that there is even any debate about approving the extremely well-written budget before you. If Milford truly is a little city with a big heart, then the true heart of this community is our public schools. This Board of Education budget deserves your support. No matter what the challenges we face, we must make children's education our top priority. Until fairly recently, I've had to -- I have to admit that I was a lazy voter and citizen, complacent and trusting. I trusted that my local elected officials would do the right thing without my input. The national election changed all that and for me and for many others. You should know that we are all talking to each other. We are mobilizing and organizing. And we realize that we must begin to take more interest and be more involved at the local and state levels. I am a constituent. I vote in every single election and I am paying attention to how you vote on this. Please vote to approve the Board of Education budget without any cuts. Thank you. Sincerely, Sarah Bromley, 27 Norway Street, Milford." In my second two minutes. Erin Pinsens again of 11 Briggs Court. I am a private school teacher, so I'm probably not the person you'd be expecting to hear at this meeting. I work for Laurelton Hall. My son is eight and he attends Meadowside. I am an active member of the PTA. And we are triple strong this year, which to me just means that we're showing up. We're hoping that you guys will also show up for us. We want our public schools to be as strong as they can possibly be with a budget cut on top of state budget cuts that we're expecting that are impending, obviously. We can't afford to lose any more than we're already going to. We're hoping, we're praying that you're on our side with us. Thank you.
My name is Dominic Cotton, 60 Corona Drive, Milford, Connecticut. And I stand before you in support of the Board of Finance's budget that was presented to you. I know you are dealing with a difficult set of circumstances within our state right at the moment, but I would like to take the opportunity to kind of give you heart in the realization that a lot of what the governor has proposed with regards to cuts, I fully don't believe is going to come to fruition. I think what you're looking at in front of you might be the perspective of what you have to deal with from the Board of Finance. I think we have a wonderful senator who's the head of the Education Committee and is certainly going to fight for Milford School Systems. And I think you have a lot of regard from other people and other communities that are facing similar sets of circumstances. Even looking at what our good speaker, Joe Arseneauitz, has said, that even if they were looking at the pension plan that they're putting forward, that this would be something that might be instituted over several years. So I want you guys to take a look seriously at our budget. I know our mayor and the Board of Education has put together a very lean budget. There's limited increases within that. I think there's been limited increases over several years. I think that they have really taken the time through the Board of Finance to be able to implement a plan that makes sense for our city. I know my son is currently involved in the elementary schools and he gets some special services through that. And they have meant obviously the world to him in being inclusionary and allowing Milford to really show respect and sunshine to each other. And I think that's an important part of what your considerations are here together. Now, I know when you have to look at this, you have to plan for the alternatives. I know a few years ago, we were certainly standing before you and making sure that we had the facilities to be able to provide services for all of our students. And I know we've made improvements on capital improvements on a lot of those facilities. And I think holding those facilities open are certainly an important function of what we provide for all of our citizens. And I know you guys are going to have to be tasked with a lot of uncertainty right at the moment. But when I look at all of you and see eyes coming back at me, you know what? I want to make sure that we put students first within any decision that we make within that. And that's an important function of what we do. And that's what we do for each other as a community, is we work together. And I know you guys have a difficult task, like I said. A lot of uncertainty within government. I feel that there's a certain heart, you know, within what we're going to get from the state and our representatives and senators that are going to look to help, hopefully help and protect us. But when you look at all the alternatives, certainly make sure that we continue to educate our populace and provide the good services that I know I appreciate from the city of Milford. Thank you.
I'm Jeanne Surveen and I just want to support and echo what the previous speakers have said. Very simply, I would say there's nothing more important to the future of our city than the education of our children.
My name is Cara Flannery and I live at 41 North Street in Milford. And first, I want to thank you all for your service. I realize that this budget season will be particularly challenging and I appreciate the work all you all are doing on behalf of our community. I'm here to support full funding of our Board of Education budget and I want to begin by sharing a story of a recent experience at my son's school. A few weeks ago, I attended parent university at Orange Avenue Elementary. And this is a time when parents are invited into the classroom to learn about what our children are doing in school and how they are being taught. The hour was led by the school math coach and she explained that her role is to coach teachers, not students. Orange Avenue had identified a weakness in early development algebraic thinking and as a result, the math coach had zeroed in on a third grade curriculum and how we teach conceptual understanding of multiplication and division. So she went on to demonstrate a 10-minute math exercise that they do in class. All the parents and students went down to the rug in front of the smartboard and she wrote, "Six times seven." And then the kids started making these hand signals and like this one meant, "I have -- I know the answer, I have one strategy." This meant, "I have the answer, I have two strategies." This meant, "I'm thinking," you know? And they were all engaged in this. And then she started calling on the students and they each shared a different strategy that they used to help them reach the answer, "Six times seven equals 42." Now, I didn't know that there were that many ways to calculate six times seven, but it showed me that by teaching our children how to think conceptually about six times seven, that they're developing the critical thinking skills necessary for much more advanced math that comes later. It was just really great teaching. A few weeks later, it was announced that Orange Avenue Elementary, along with Pumpkin Delight, had earned an award as a school of distinction by the State of Connecticut for the amount of growth in student performance in the past year. This award is a very important indicator of what I witnessed in the classroom, that this administration has been doing the hard work on raising the level of teaching in our schools and it's starting to pay off. I'm here today to ask for your support for our Milford Public Schools and what I see as an emerging success story that will drive economic growth in this community. Milford needs good schools and the families that choose them. I say this because this is how families choose where they live. This is particularly relevant to the senior citizens in our community that are currently aging in their family homes. Young families looking to buy homes in our area are not looking at our mil rate. They are looking at our schools and they are comparing our schools in Milford to Orange, to Trumbull, to Stratford. Having an elementary school recognized for student growth makes a difference. A high school recognized for its offerings of AP classes makes a difference. Robotics programs, language labs, college and career pathways, all of this makes a difference in whether or not families choose Milford. And choosing Milford means a strong housing market and the tax revenue that follows. Milford is, and always has been, a town that embraces the thrift and our administration is no exception. Milford Board of Ed has presented a very conservative budget, one that it feels will sustain and continuously improve the education provided to the children in Milford. The total requested budget increase for Milford school spending is just .791%. It's the smallest increase proposed by a superintendent in 15 years and includes cuts to staffing, educational supplies, and utilities. It is important to acknowledge that declining enrollment is already helping us to do more with less. Within the school's budget, 86% constitutes contractual items that can't be cut and a portion of the remaining 13.94% is budgeted for special education and state/federal mandates that can't be cut. This means that any cuts would have a significant impact on our schools. I am very impressed with the Milford mil rate at 27.88. This is a wonderful testament to your leadership, especially when you consider the mil rates of our neighbors. Orange, 32.2. Stratford, 38.99. But I want you to know, it does not help us to keep our mil rate low if it comes at the expense of services this community wants and needs. I'm going to say this again. It does not help us to keep our mil rate low if it comes at the expense of services this community wants and needs. And I say this specifically to Alderman Anderson, Alderman Bevan, and Alderman Vitale, who represent me in the 5th District. You would be doing our entire community a huge disservice to consider cuts in our education budget at this time. Lastly, I want to say that I know in the next few weeks, you will be looking at a variety of worst-case scenarios in response to proposed but not yet determined losses in state funding. If any of these worst-case scenarios are directed at our schools, it is imperative that you make these scenarios public and engage our parent community in a dialogue before moving forward. To this end, I have invited Alderman from District 1 and District 5 to our next PTA meeting at Orange Avenue Elementary. And I really believe that you need us to help you make the best decisions for our community. And an open dialogue is the best way to do this. I recommend each of you find a way to connect with schools in your district before rendering your decisions in May. Thank you for your service and your time. Sorry.
I just would like to speak to arts education in our public schools. And I know that with the governor's budget, it looks -- if there is a worst-case scenario or even if we do get significant funding cut --
Excuse me?
Oh, I'm sorry.
You need to state your name and address for the records.
Of course. Natalie Osborne, 51 Lambert Drive, Milford, Connecticut. Thank you. That art -- well, when -- basically when the budget is tight, arts education is often what gets cut first. And I would just like to advocate on behalf of arts education. When I was a student at Foreign High School, the visual art department helped me grow so much as a human being and as an artist and that's helped me since I've graduated and gone into the arts. But also just as a person, it connects with -- it gives you the ability to connect with your shared humanity and certain problem-solving skills that you don't get from other courses where you're pushed to think individually and creatively. And those skills apply to real life, no matter what industry you go into. So I would just want to encourage the board to support arts education. Thank you all so much. Have a wonderful evening.
Anyone else like to speak on the education side of the budget? Seeing none at this point, any speaker wishing to comment on the city side of the budget? Please come to the podium at this time. I guess no one has anything to say about the city side of the budget. Well, we do have Mr. Brown.
Mike Brown, 67 Point Beach Drive. Just have a question about Milford Progress Incorporated. Notice that it still has $10,000 in there. And I'm under the impression that the Milford Progress Incorporated is talking about de-incorporating. So exactly why we're giving them money, I have a big question about that. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I don't know the protocol. Is the library situation appropriate now?
Yes, it is.
Okay. My name is Linda Whitaker. Address is 32D Shipyard Lane. I have a kind of unique place to observe the library because I live right across the street. And it moved -- I moved there about a year and a half ago. And I was really amazed because I mostly don't see the back door of the library when you're driving by, but I was amazed every time I look out my window, somebody is coming, mostly coming and some going, obviously, from the back door of that library. There's a lot of people that enter, there's a lot of use, there's a lot of activities that go on there. I must say that I thought, before I spent a lot of time there, that I thought more of libraries being books and then more into the technology. But with the program that we have here at Milford, I see a lot of opportunity for community building. I see a lot of opportunity for cultural things to be happening. The Friends of the Library have been sponsoring music activities, they're sponsoring art things, they're sponsoring all kinds of things in the program room as you go in the back door, just to the right. I think -- see things going on for all kinds of population statistics, like all different ages. I see people coming of all economic levels, people of all educational levels. I see people, immigrants who are there. My daughter is the executive director of the Literacy Center and they now have a desk in the library where people who are wanting to learn English now have an opportunity to learn and be acquainted with that at the library. So I would encourage you to consider carefully when you think about what you need to do in this very challenging situation, about not making any cuts to the library. There are lots and lots of so many good things going on. And I hope we can continue that. To me, that's part of what makes this town. To me, that's part of what makes this town the city with the big heart. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to comment on the city's side of the budget?
My name is Linda Sheehan. I live at 150 Forest Road, Unit 35. I've only been a resident for three years. I absolutely love this town. I am an avid member of the Friends of the Library. I know how hard they all work, I know how hard we work to support them and all their wonderful programs, and I would just hope that the budget does not get cut. Thank you.
Erin Pinsons, Levin Briggs Court. Again, another anecdotal piece for you about the Art Library. I know it's a hot topic right now. Again, you know, my son and I have lived here, I'm a single mother. I do my best to provide for my son as much as I can. I have family support here. I'm also getting engaged soon, and we're looking for towns to live in. We're looking at Milford, Orange, and Oxford. Oxford is having a brand-new public library built right now. It's gorgeous. And I don't want to leave this town because, to me, this is the hub of all things. It's a little city with a big heart. You know, you want this for your kid, you want a neighborhood, and you want the librarians that will work with your kid's second-grade teacher to get their One City One book in all of their classrooms and make sure that every kid is reading it, and the principal is recording herself reading the chapters to the kids at night, so you can go on the website and click her voice, and they hear it. You don't get that in Oxford with a new library. You don't get that in Orange, and I want that for my child. And my soon-to-be fiance wants that for his daughter, who is the same age as my child. And we're trying desperately to come here, to live here, and in our price range, yeah, we can afford Milford, but the Oxford homes are so much nicer, and there's so much more land, and there's so much of all of these things, except it doesn't have that Little City with a Big Heart feel. So, I want to stay here, but I want to give him reasons to come here. I want to give our children reasons to want to grow up here in this neighborhood and with these schools and with these libraries and with these teachers. I just want to. Please keep that the way it is. Thank you.
I'll say my last thing words. Obviously, I've been a Milford resident for the last 11 years, not thoroughly invested the way that many others have been up until a few years ago. I just want to note my appreciation for the work that you guys do. I know the Board of Finance and our good mayor, who's sitting to the right over here, have done to make Milford a livable city, whether it's the sidewalk projects, whether it's making improvements to our Marina and downtown area, and all that everybody's really put together to make this a place that people want to come to. You know what? I'm not looking to move to Oxford. I actually, I actually know several people out there, and I know my wife came from Oxford several years ago, and she wanted to be in Milford. And, you know, we come out here and we say our good words, and we really are a part of this community. And it's because we're able to keep the community financially together, and I know that takes a lot of work. You know, many people can come in here and not go through the budget process and give to whoever whatever they think that they need and not question all the pieces of that. But you know what? It's what we hold dear to our citizenship that brings us together as a community. And I certainly have experienced that over a number of years, more so over the last probably three, four years, since I became thoroughly involved and committed into Milford's success. But you know what? It's my level of appreciation for what you guys have in front of you, and that we provide for each other and that we do for each other, and that we provide services that make people want to come here. And, you know, we do have an enviable, natural resources that we're very thankful for. But you know what? We also realize that you guys have a difficult task and that you have that level of commitment to be able to make sure this is sustainable for all of us. So, for that, I thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to talk on the city's side of the budget? Seeing none, I want to thank each and every one of you for taking the time to come out here tonight and to express your views on the educational part of our budget as well as the city's side of the budget. Our Madam Secretary would like to say a few words. Kathy?
I just want to apologize for being late. I had a minor family emergency, and I apologize to the public that took the time to be here on time, and I also apologize to the mayor and this board. So, my apologies for my lateness.
Thank you, Kathy. Is there a motion to recess to the next budget meeting on April 10th, 2017? Give a second. Have a motion and a second? Hall in favor?
Aye.
We're in to recess till April 10th. Thank you.